Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 10th special meeting for the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education. I am delighted to have Ms. Lopez here with us, who will give us our spill, Ms. Lopez. Please begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to provide a brief overview of today's special meeting. For a few procedural items, the board will hear 15 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comments, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button, the bottom of your screen and selecting the Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing nine, by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you will have to wait until the next public comment period. When called upon, you will be prompted to a panelist. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write your student or S at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When you have, your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Babbitt holding a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de 15 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser, que hoy será como a eso de las 6 a la tarde, habrá una segunda última oportunidad para que quienes deseen participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el periodo primero del comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, favor levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y seleccione el botón Levantar la mano o Raise Your Hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. Favor de hacerlo ya, que si, porque si espera después del inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. La presidenta de mesa directiva otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes, a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra datación especial. Al ser llamado, será promocionado al panelista y aparecerá en la pantalla. Si no desea aparecer en la pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le falten 15 segundos, la vicepresidenta Babbitt le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si todavía no está hablando cuando acabe el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor no trate de sobrepasar su tiempo. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. Good evening, good afternoon again, everyone. The meeting is now called to order at 4:11 PM. And for the record, closed session began at 3:30. Ms. Lopez, can you please call the role of the board directors?
Director Sinai? Director Alper? Director Babbitt?
Here.
Director Vasudev?
Here.
President Brown?
Present.
Thank you so much. We need to now approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this afternoon's agenda? The move by Director Alper is their second.
My second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Ms. Lopez, can you please call the role?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Vice President Babbitt, can you please report out from closed session?
Yes, closed session began at 3:30 today. We heard an update on item 3.1 and gave direction.
Thank you so much.
Our members were present.
Thank you, Vice President Babbitt. At this time, we will now move to public comment. As Ms. Lopez said in her introduction, the public comic period for this time is going to be 15 minutes. Please, if you are interested in being a public commenter, this is the perfect time to raise your hand to speak. After this public comment period has, after the time to raise your hand has ended and the public comment period has begun, there will be no other opportunities to raise your hand until the second opportunity for public comments. So at this time, Ms. Lopez, can you please promote one panelist? I see one attendee who is interested in giving a public comment, and that is Ms. Cho. So can you please promote her, Ms. Lopez?
How much time?
We're going to give each public commenter three minutes. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi again.
Hello.
Good afternoon and thank you for this time for public engagement. I am Ronit Cho, a parent and PTA co-president at Emerson Elementary School in District Eight. I am here to be a witness to the superintendent's election process to make sure that the process recognizes the existing challenges and backlog and that these are brought to the attention of prospective superintendent candidates. We expect a new superintendent who will advocate for increased community engagement and transparency in the project prioritization process for measure bond G funds. Somehow, a $25 million parking garage tennis complex that will have take three to five years to complete gets to be first in line while we have Emerson Elementary School and others that are in dire need of updates, including ventilation and plumbing that affect our youngest students' health and academic outcomes. With three director seats up for election in November, the proposed strategic plan, as mentioned in last night's board meeting, would further delay solving our current infrastructure shortcomings. We want a candidate who is ready to dive into the deep end, not take a month's long temperature reading only to leave after a three-year term. Thank you for your service in representing the Berkeley Public School community.
Thank you, Ms. Cho, for being here this afternoon. At this time, there aren't any other public comment to put that present. So we will move on to our first discussion item for today. As you may be aware, we are going to have our discussion item about the superintendent's search process. Today, we are joined with Leadership Associates Search Room and their advisors, Eric Andrews and David, who will help the board discuss some of the following topics. Number one, an overview of the search process, how the board and search forms protocols will be developed, potential surveys in combination with the process, recommendations from the board regarding community and staff groups to participate and get input in the process, a timeline for the search process, as well as board input regarding qualities and characteristics of a superintendent. And so I'm excited and happy to welcome Eric Andrew and also David Vertigo to present our leadership, our superintendent's search process from Leadership Associate Search Room. Welcome.
Thank you guys so much for having us here. We're, and this is our initial meeting, and during this meeting, we take care of a lot of the details of the search itself. And so I'm going to kind of go through the agenda, and then we'll go back and go through the specific items as we have further discussion. So today, we will talk about who will be the board liaison. And I, and I think the board has already identified two people. We'll talk about who will be the person that will work with our assistant. Becky Banning has been assigned as our assistant that will work with the district's admin assistant to help with the process and help keep all of us on track. We'll also ask for information about the directors and their contact information, particularly their email addresses. We will continue to look at things such as reviewing the position profile process. We'll talk about the online survey and what languages the district and the board would like to see engaged in the online survey. We'll talk about when the information will be published to edcal, edjoin, and the other publications that we use. We'll also talk about when we will be reaching out to the stakeholder groups and what formats we will use in order to do that. We'll talk about things such as the closed session, when we will talk about, we'll bring forward the candidates that we would recommend for interview, and we'll ensure that the board has access to all of the candidates who have applied through a private portal so that you will have a chance to review them prior to our meeting along the way. And then we'll talk a little bit about interviews. We will not have to get into all the details, but we do want to solidify interview dates and on possible locations. So we will start having some of those conversations. Dave and I will talk about recruitment of candidates. We'll talk a little bit about the contract parameters, and we'll ask that you send us a copy of contract parameters that you would like to see as we engage possible participants. And then we'll ask any questions that you would, you would have along the way. We'll end this meeting with David and I asking the board a few questions, a few questions or prompts. The first prompt, and this will be the prompt that will be used when we're doing our stakeholder input sessions, it will also be the three prompts that we will use on the online survey. And those three prompts are, what are the characteristics and qualities you would like to see in the next superintendent? Two, what are the strengths of the district? And this is your opportunity to brag about the district so that we can recruit candidates and give them wonderful things that are happening there in Berkeley. And then we'll follow it up with what are the opportunities for growth that the superintendent needs to be aware of as they're moving forward. We'll take this information, and as I said earlier, we'll develop a position profile. We want to ensure that we are creating a profile that reflects the vision of the board and the input of the community. We think that's extremely important in this case. So with that being said, is it, just is it possible for me to share screens?
Yes, let me give you access to that. You should be able to share now.
Wish me luck, everyone. Okay, and so here's pretty much our agenda for this evening. And so I've gone through kind of what we'll be talking about today. The board has identified Director Laura Babbitt and Ana Vasudio as our board liaisons, and so Dave and I will be reaching out to them specifically, and then they will disseminate any information or direct us to disseminate any information. As I mentioned earlier, Becky Banning, who's our outstanding admin assistant, will be working with, in this case, Jessica Lopez, if I'm not mistaken. And that's where a lot of communications will be coming to and from in terms of forums that will be used. Any minutes or any initial agenda items that need to be placed, we will work with them directly. Board of trustees email addresses, they are posted on the website, so we think we have access to them. Input. So a couple of things we want to be able to do is provide the board, and we can do this a couple of ways. One, we have a list of suggested of suggested topics that are groups that we invite, but every district is unique. And we want to be able to include and ensure that that we are reaching out to especially those groups that, that typically have not been a part of many of the decisions or don't feel as if they've been included in the decision-making process. So we will give you a list, and my first question to the board would be, how do you, how would you like that list to be distributed? Do you want us to distribute it to Ana and Laura? Or, and then you guys can distribute it to the rest of the board, and you can get back to us in terms of groups that you want to eliminate from that list or groups that you choose to include that are not listed there. So your thoughts?
Well, unfortunately, we have, oh, I'm sorry. Should I raise my hand?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Should we? We have Brown Act rules, so how we could work off. So if the board is happy for Ana and I to go through the list.
I wouldn't feel totally comfortable deferring to Vice President Babbitt and Director Vasudev on that.
Also, to give my input, I would be comfortable with our ad hoc committee representatives to do that as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, I guess what I, would we be presented the final list that you guys come up with in case there's something that we feel we want to make sure we add or put back in? Or are we just delegating it to directors Vasudev and Babbitt?
I think that it's just a challenge like for, for Brown, like we'd have to somehow come back together to do that.
Well, or if the, if, if the consultant sent us the list and we sent it back to the consultants and not to each other.
Then that falls fine under Brown, if we're not sending it back.
Yeah, because we're not sharing it with each other. I mean, I would like to, I guess I'm, I'm asking to see the list. Not that I don't, I don't trust Vice President Babbitt and Vasudev, but I would like to see it before it's finalized or, you know, as it evolves, because there might be things that we want to make sure get included.
So if, if Director Vasudev and I go over the first list, we can send it to the consultants, they can send it out, and you can give them any additional feedback.
That would be, that would be perfect.
And if anything is super controversial, we can just agendize it for another meeting.
Yeah. Director Vasudev?
Yeah, I didn't have to find and work around. I was just going to second one. Director Sinai said I would like for the rest of the board to be able to see the full list as well.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we will send it to Laura and Ana. They will take a look at it, get it back to us. We will take their input and then send it out from us to the board members, and the board members will return it to us with any suggestions that they have. Keeping in mind, it probably will require 24 to 48 hour return just in order to keep up with the timeline. That works. Okay?
Thank you.
You, you got it. And so as you, let's take a look at the next bullet, the position description, district provides narrative, community. This is something that we will put together as we do the community input, as well as with the information that we have here, we take tonight from the board itself. The next bullet, majority of board members to review and respond to position description prior to post it. And we can use a similar process as we use with the sample names, if that works for you. And then we can go, we, if you take a look there on the online survey, and we would like to know what languages would you prefer to use for the online survey? Because we definitely want to make, ensure that we are able to reflect the various languages and cultures within the district.
I'm going to ask our ad hoc committee members to get the list of their most used languages here in BUSD to provide that to you so that the languages provided for the survey reflect the languages that we need.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. If you've noticed that if in terms of looking at the timeline and publication dates, we're looking at March 21st and 28th, that is very, very aggressive. Very aggressive. And so in terms of getting information up to you and so on, we may end up pushing that date back a little bit, but we're going to work as hard as we can to maintain those two dates. And the reason for that being typically the, if we're putting in edcow, which is the AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators publication, it's usually a week before the date of publication, and so that, that may cause some issues. But we'll work closely with the two subcommittee members, and we'll figure out a way to move forward with that.
Can I ask a question? What is your capacity to actually translate surveys into various languages?
We typically do Spanish. We do have some Mandarin. And then we'll work with the district to use some of whatever translation services or individuals that you have to put them in those various languages.
Okay, I'm just curious because the 16th is really right around the corner. I'm not sure if we could turn around.
Okay, okay.
We have the capacity to turn around, say Eric or.
Yeah, and some of those things we may have to change in the date, and so we will have some flexibility. I believe one of the things that we're really trying to do are twofold, one being being able to conduct the, the oh, I'm getting a message from our admin that we do have them translated in some of the languages already, so we'll work with the subcommittee for that. Okay?
I'm trying to make a quick comment on the languages. It seems from the district side that we can get things translated within 36 hours.
Okay, good, good to know. Perfect. If you notice that we're looking to have the position close and have a review of the applications on the 19th of April with interviews taking place somewhere in the vicinity of April 30th, excuse me, 29th, 30th, and May 1st. And I think it's important for us to nail those down tonight. So if we can have board members take a look at their calendars to see which of those two dates. I believe last time, and those of you who are there, I believe we did it over two days. And so I would suggest that we do the same. And so let's take a look at our calendars to see which two days work best.
Eric, are you talking about for the application review or the interviews?
Interviews themselves.
I think we did Saturday, Sunday. Yeah, we did it Saturday, Sunday, but we also held a date for an application review, maybe more than one day for application review, or is it only one for application review?
Typically, it's only one day, and the reason for that being, you're going to receive the applications prior to the application review. We will have tiered them for you, and so by the time it's time for that application review process, you'll have had a chance a few days, and typically we like to do it over a weekend if we can to meaning the update for the board to take a look at them, and then it'll be pretty clear in terms of who we believe are our top candidates.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then for the closed session date for interviews, you want us to hold these three days, the 29th, 30th, and the 1st of May?
No, I want us to, I want us to see if we can solidify the two dates right now, so either the 29th and 30th or the 30th and May 1st.
Let's go around board members and share our preference, because I think Eric wants to to know that.
Can I just answer a clarif- question, President Brown?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are, do we not, do we need to also, are we also holding April 19th, and do we need to have it as, do we need to figure out what time that is available?
Yes, yes, we will do that. Yes, for sure.
Okay, but first, we're doing the interviewed dates?
Yes, yes, because the April 19th, I think is a solid date. We just have to pick a time. But the other, the interview themselves, we've got three days. We need to narrow that down to two.
What is the time commitment on these days for the Saturday, Sunday?
Typically, the first day is going to be all day, and the second day is going to be most of the day. So typically, we start somewhere around eight o'clock in somewhere in the vicinity of five. The second day, we could start maybe at 8:30 or 9:00, but you will probably be there till at least three to four.
And for the 19th, Eric, it will be an all-day thing as well?
No, the 19th will only be two or three hours.
Okay.
I would say three hours.
Would the directors and the board happen to have a starting time that they would prefer for that special meeting on?
The 19th?
April 19th. I'm not sure if one could confirm that at this stage.
I see.
April 19th is a Tuesday, and typically we would be prepared to have those types of meetings towards the end of the day. Where directors, do you, before we, let's, let's deal with that date before we get to the closed session interview, because that seems a little easier. Where directors, I'll go ahead and just recommend the 4:00 to 6:00 PM timeframe. Does that work for everyone? If not, please state your preference. Or 4:00 to 7:00?
I prefer 5:00. Tuesdays are a packed day for me normally at work, so 5:00 would be better.
Five to eight? Where directors, are you okay with five to eight? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
That helps, President. Thank you very much.
President Brown, can we ask Ms. Lopez to send out an invite for that?
Yes, please. So 5:00 to 8:00 PM on the 19th, correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
An invite. This will be held over Zoom?
Yes, this will, this will be held over Zoom.
Okay.
And, and if Eric, what you're proposing is the first day be a full board day. Where directors, are you okay with taking the dates, the 30th and the 1st of May? The 30th being the full day that we conduct interviews, and May 1st, that's Sunday, being the day that we conduct interviews. If not, please share your preference.
I appreciate those days.
Yes.
All right, Director Sinai? Director Alper? Beautiful. Okay, Jessica, if you could also send out the 30th and the 30th of April and the 1st of May, full day on the 30th and half of the day on the 1st.
Will do.
Good job, you guys.
And we will, we will provide more details regarding the logistics of that, of that interview process.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, we will draw on what we did last, last time, but we'll, we'll get more into details with that.
Director Alper, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't, we're, if it's in person, which I would just throw in a quick plug for the interviews to be in person as opposed to over Zoom. Last year, last time, we did it in an offsite location that took, it was great, but it took, it took a couple of weeks to kind of pin one, a good location down. So if we're going to do it in person, that's something that the committee, I think, will probably want to start looking at. The place that we went and did it last time will not be available this time.
Oh, okay, and I would agree with, with you. One, it, it should be in person. And then two, now that we have the date solidified, let's start looking at it, and we'll work with committee on that.
Thank you.
The next bullet talks about a validation process. We can talk a little bit more about that during the, our meeting on the 19th. But that's typically where if there is a candidate and the board feels compelled to go and visit that cap, that candidate at their particular site, meeting with their board, meeting with other stakeholders, sometimes boards bring stakeholders from their committee, from their district to meet, but that's not something that needs to be solidified right now. I will tell you that it probably is being done less and less and primarily because of the pandemic. Yeah, but David, do you want to talk a little bit about the recruitment?
Eric, before we move on?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Because I don't know if it's in here. But at the point where an offer is made, and then there's the site visit historically, normally.
Right.
You know, like the site visits, the meetings with, you know, their home district. Is that, is that something that is still occurring? Is that in the timeline? Because I think when we think about dates and, and, you know, dedicating our personal time, what's the, I don't know, if it's coming up, then we'll get to it, but just wondering where that falls in the process.
Yes, typically, I will tell you, it's probably happening less than 25% of the time now. And I think it was maybe 50% of the time prior to the pandemic. Districts are not, just aren't doing it. They don't feel compelled to do that. If it is, we typically would do it sometimes the week after the interviews.
So is that something that we need to discuss at some point in time?
Yes.
Is this a good time to discuss it?
We can. We can discuss, first of all, does the board have a desire?
Well, I think we can go around and share, but I know that being a part of this process. In the past, it was really helpful to have that additional interview or additional opportunity to go to the home. Home districts of the superintendent, Director Sinai and I partnered together on that. And I thought it was a really important. Step in the process. I'm sorry to hear that other people aren't doing it anymore. But I was excited about maybe the opportunity to do that again this, this time around. And there's something special to be said about being in the space where your new superintendent is coming from. And learning about their day to day with the people they work most closely with. Director Sinai, did you want to share? And then Director Alper, Director Vasilev and Director Babbitt?
Yeah, I felt like it was a really good experience. I feel mixed on the benefits of it, though, in the sense of decision making because. I do think that people are not necessarily the most forthcoming. Usually, it's a, it's a pretty harmonious dialogue. It's not like you get a lot of information about a candidate's challenges or weaknesses. Because, I mean, I think a lot of that comes in more off the record follow up that people do with people that they know. So I, you know, I, I'm kind of mixed because President Brown, I agree with you. It was a great experience to go. And visit the sites and kind of be in the space, but I also feel like. You get a certain. Gloss. You know, with it. So I, I want to find some, I mean, at the same time, I think this district has some historical experience. With needing to make sure deep due diligence is done. You know, on candidate, so, you know, but again, that deep due diligence is not necessarily done through site visits. So I think there's some combination.
So if, would you be interested? Is that something you would be interested in continuing with or no?
You know, I think at this point, I'm interested in hearing what other people, I think I'm open either way. But I do still feel like if we didn't do it. I would want to know. How we can kind of learn more about somebody from their district like. Maybe it's in a, maybe it's not site visits, maybe it's interview. I'm, I'm mixed on it. I'm agnostic at this moment.
Who would like to go next? Director Alper, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I mean, if, if, if people really wanted to do it, I wouldn't be opposed to. The reasons that Julie was skeptical is a lot of time on, on two board members parts and in addition to whatever scheduling. And then all the people at the other district. And. I'm not really very convinced that it yields much helpful information.
Director Vasilev and then Director Babbitt.
Yeah, I think I like the one on one conversations with folks. I'd be curious, President Brown, since you've done this, since you've had this experience before. And Director Sinai, who did you meet with at other districts? Like, what kind of level staff are you talking about that you went there? What type of people that you meet with?
We met with board members. We also met with principals. Those who are running school programs and who would be considered, I guess, direct reports in that case. But then board members, you know, for the reasons you meet with board members.
Yeah, I think the one on one conversations in that case, you know, not necessarily, I think, in the COVID world. Not necessarily prioritizing a site visit and having those conversations remotely would work.
The other thing that does happen usually is that the unions talk to each other as well. I mean, sometimes you've got like the B F T will talk to the teachers' union. At the home district of superintendent and, you know, B C C E may or may not. Talk to the classified union. Almost always the teachers' union will talk to the, their, their counterparts in their district to get the feed, to get feedback.
And they share that feedback with the board through or with, with the consultants through a formal process? Or is it more like informal that they, like, how do they get that feedback?
I don't remember.
Maybe David or Eric can step up and share.
I, I think there's been a number of points that have been made that are accurate about the validation visit. The report back typically comes back to the balance of the board from the ad hoc group. Or the individuals who are attending that validation visit. If it's two individuals, there's no need to agendize it. If it's more than two, of course, then you need to have more, if there's more board members that are going to attend, then it needs to be agendized. Again, whether or not you folks would like to have. Teachers Association or classified folks join you on that validation visit is dependent upon the trustees. But. There are, there are correct points in, in the conversation previously. The information that you're receiving is just that. It's, it's validating and confirming. From people who have worked directly with the superintendent that you have selected. That it's one more level, if you will. And it might be an important aspect to what I'm going to call some due diligence on the part of the trustees. With respect to coming back to your stakeholders in public and saying that you've done that as well. It may be, however, a little difficult with regards to a personal visit, depending upon where this new superintendent might be coming from. If the superintendent is coming from Virginia, that might not be, you know, the ability to go there on a timely basis. And deal with the other aspects of the contract negotiations with your legal counsel and so on are sometimes timely. But of course, as Dr. Andrew mentioned, the opportunity to do this via Zoom would be of interest to the board.
Thank you for that. And Director Babbitt. Vice President Babbitt, sorry.
It's okay. I was gonna say quickly, I've only been on site visits after the candidate was pretty much selected and was the top candidate. And. Even from that perspective, I would agree that you're getting the image that has been set up to be portrayed. And it's really more offline conversations that with people you know that can give you more insight and information. So. If time or location is an issue, I am happy with the. The diligence of one on one conversations and the diligence of actually making sure we do a deep dive in their. Background with references beyond those that they provide.
And if I may, I would agree with that in terms of the vetting process. Certainly more than the five references that someone would put on the application or the three letters of recommendation. We go well beyond that. So you are correct.
So we don't necessarily need to decide tonight that we're definitely going to do site visits. So we're not going to, we can kind of see. Because it's not like you can set them up in advance anyway. You can't do it until you've got your top candidate.
Right.
But it sounds like the leaning is unless it's super easy to hop, skip and a jump somewhere. The site visit doesn't sound like it's an overwhelming compelling thing, but it might be something that we do.
That's correct.
Okay. And if you were to do that, typically, it would be somewhere around the week of May ninth through thirteenth. Because it would, the candidate would need some time to make those arrangements with their, their particular people.
And so we certainly put as needed in that category of the information that Dr. Andrew has up on the screen right now.
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Board, for your input on that.
With respect to number seven, the next item on the worksheet there or the agenda. I think that I would begin with the emphasis on the position description. The match and fit and the assessment that potential applicants would be utilizing that position description. To determine whether or not they are in fact that match and fit. Going back to the number or the high volume of applicants that you had previously about three years ago. I feel very confident that you're going to get a high number of people who are going to be interested in Berkeley U S D. Having said that, though, the recruitment process is as comprehensive as the vetting process. We, as partners in Leadership Associates, every other week. Have a deep dive conversation about the various searches that we are conducting. We have fourteen partners across the state. And so we utilize that networking process as well to acquire potential and possible names of candidates. Who they know are of high quality, of course, and who might be interested in this kind of position. Beyond that, Leadership Associates blast out to approximately eight hundred individuals currently throughout the state. Of the fact that this position would be open and available. Eric already mentioned the edcal advertising to AXA. We have stretched that out occasionally to CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents. As well as TOCASA, the California Association of African American Administrators. And there are a few other networking opportunities with different organizations that we have worked with previously. Including a variety of executive directors that we would reach out to to try to acquire and determine. The pool of candidates that might, again, be the best match and fit. But the reason I started with that position description, I think that's going to be important. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was either President Brown that mentioned the fact that there are other factors now. That are desirable or priorities in a post-COVID world. As you have gone through this dilemma. You know, there are a number of skill sets and qualities that are going to need to be, going to need to be added to that position description. Of leaders that you're searching for. Whether, as an example, it is someone who has dealt with challenges. Whether it's somebody who has dealt with the learning loss or perhaps equity questions. Social emotional situations that our students are going through currently. So we would make sure to determine through and with the trustees. What that information should be in the position description itself. There, there are times, ladies and gentlemen, that someone will apply that we, we know really doesn't have the skill sets initially. Their trajectory isn't something that would qualify them for the opportunity to become a superintendent. And we certainly don't stop the application process. But we do have conversations with them as to where they are at versus what you might be searching for. I'm going to be very candid with you, and we also know, ladies and gentlemen, who has baggage. And we don't want one of those folks. We know people who want to have a springboard opportunity. As compared to having a longevity opportunity there in Berkeley. So there's a lot of details and conversations that go on relating to the position description. That help us with respect to that recruitment process.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Looking at any questions about the recruitment? And I think it was Director Babbitt who mentioned the importance, and David also alluded to it, the importance of us. Who do, identify, who do we know that knows that candidate, that candidate in those offline conversations? Because that's really is what we look at to truly drive the candidates forward is. Do we have, we have reliable sources who can give us a little background on the person, much more so than just the people that they've given up. They've identified in their references and or their letters of recommendation.
Dr. Andrew, excuse me, I think we have a couple of questions from the board members, if that's okay. Let's start with Director Vasilev, and then we can go to Director Sinai.
I was just, thank you, David, for explaining how you reach out to the different, like affinity group organizations that work in education. Is there an A P I affinity group?
Yes, and we are members of that group as well.
Great, thank you.
Yep. In fact, it's just one, we just had a dinner with their official kickoff. When was that, David? Was it in January?
Yes.
Yes, it was in January, so we were invited to be a part of that.
Well, that's great. It's relatively, relatively new.
Yes, yes, called Capel.
Great, thank you.
In fact, if I may, I'm the former Executive Director of CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents. And I've worked very, very closely with Dwight Bonds from CASA. So these conversations. Are very typical and sometimes on a monthly basis.
Yeah, and in addition to that, I'm a, I'm a board member of CASA. And I have actually the region consultant for region eight. And on that committee, we do have three, I think, board members who are on the, on the. New. Capel board. And so we will be very intimately involved in their development and getting the groups involved. With the Asian Pacific Islander groups to be a part of this process, for sure.
If I brag for a moment, we help them write their bylaws.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, I'm a big fan of CALSA and I'm a P L S B A board member myself.
Currently, the interim Executive Director of AXA is one of our partners. Doctor Mark Ecker is currently the interim executive of AXA, the statewide association.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions?
So I guess my question is maybe just to pinpoint a clarification because I wasn't sure. I heard David. So you clearly have a lot of connections with the affinity organizations. I think we clearly want to make sure we reach out to those folks because I think I heard you say that we have or we can. I think, I think I can say on behalf of the board that we, we want to reach out to those groups, absolutely.
Okay, we will do that for sure.
And you will, you folks will have a national interest as well. I know that we've been concentrating on the state of California, but. There will be national interest applicants as well. It poses a little bit of a different, not dilemma, but interest in terms of their experience with California politics, legislation. Funding, so on and so forth. So some of our questions for those particular people who might be interested on a national basis. Are a little bit different with regards to their, their foundation of California education.
Moving you to item eight. Contract parameters, and that's what we will give to the finalist, excuse me, for the group. Who we will, the board will select for an interview. Each of those candidates will provide. A contract parameter form which will detail Derek asked for salary, benefits, vacation, workdays and those types of things. I will send the two committee members a, the actual document that we use so they can have it on hand. And it may be something that the board would like to look at as a whole in, in the future, but we will provide that document for you. In addition to that, looking, we will have the board complete contract parameters. We have an idea what you're, we're asking. And so sometimes what we'll do is, as you see in item nine, we will ask for the current superintendent's contract. And use that as a basis because what will happen is a lot of the candidates will go directly to your website and look for that. The contract of the current superintendent to establish a baseline for what their ask could be along the way. So. We will want a copy of that. And so who will be the right person to get that from? Can we just ask the subcommittee to work with us on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? Let's talk a little bit more about the process and those types of things.
So maybe just for the purposes for the public. We, we talked a little bit about the survey. Are there other avenues in which the community might be engaged in the process?
The primary ways in which we do that is when we have the community input sessions. And that's where the subcommittee will give us names of groups and so on. And then the online survey is the other way in which they can participate.
So I'm sorry, maybe I missed it in the list of the agenda up here. Are there dates identified for the community input sessions?
Yes, right now we have March eighteenth. We're looking at adding one more day. To that. Possibly March twenty first. But we'll work with the subcommittee to determine if that's needed. We typically have done it in one day, sometimes two, and depending on the size of the list and the availability of those folks. And who we want to reach out to. So if, if possible, it would be great if we can have this kind of a brief meeting with the subcommittee tomorrow. Just to really iron out some of these details that we've talked about as a full board. And we can come up with some ideas about that.
Yeah, tomorrow's really hard for me.
Okay.
But maybe Monday.
Okay, all right.
If it's not, if it's not too late, thank you.
No, 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 that's fine.
Can I ask you all to, to maybe connect offline and find a date and maybe just?
Absolutely, we can do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Alper, you have a question?
Yeah. I don't see on this, the, the agenda that you have here, Eric, the overall timeline, which I know you've. Provided to us, but is, is that, I'm sorry if I missed this, is that going to be posted publicly, the overall timeline? And do we have a web, do we already have a website? Web page, is that where to? Yeah, that's my question.
Following this meeting. Your district website will have a variety of information we're going to provide to Ms. Lopez. And that will be the, the information that can be shared with the public. I would add, if I may go back a couple of steps with regards to the survey. We've had really a huge success. Most likely as a result of COVID, of course. But we've had a huge success with respondents giving us feedback on that. And that survey consists of, it's anonymous, but at the same time, it does break down the categories of individuals who are responding to it. So are you a teacher? Are you a volunteer? Are you a Rotary Club member, so on and so forth? So all of that information at some point in time eventually gets provided to the entire board in the form of an executive summary. With all of the characteristics, all of the challenges and the strengths. And we certainly think that that's going to be an important document. Once a superintendent is selected to begin to. Again, create perhaps a 90-day plan, 100-day plan strategically with, with the trustees.
And just, thank you, and just on the timeline, I just wanted to note or get again, and also ask if I could, President Brown. I compared the proposed timeline to the one from three years ago, Eric, and. It were about like two to three weeks behind where we were. And can you just give us and, and the public to the extent they're here, which is only a few people, but. Are, are you, you know, is that still, are we still in the ballpark in terms of what other, where other districts are? It makes me nervous that we're a little behind where we were last time, but I, I assume you feel confident that we're still in the ballpark.
I, I really do believe that. I, I believe that once things are published, that you will start getting very good and quality candidates. The other thing that's going to happen is people will look at Berkeley and know that it is truly a destination district for, for several superintendents. City superintendents, and so I, I don't feel we'll have any problems securing a great. Field of candidates for, for the district at all.
So you don't think we need to look for ways to truncate this, the timeline even more? You think we're, we're, we're good?
I, I think we're good. I think it's actually pretty truncated, probably as truncated as we've ever had one, to be honest with you.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, this is probably the fastest turnaround, and we're going to really be relying on the subcommittee. To help us with, with even turning around information even faster in order for us to make sure we meet these timelines and deadlines.
And it still provides a July 1st start date.
Yeah.
Well, and the fortunate part is that it, it wasn't that long ago that we collected a lot of this information.
Right.
Crafted a job description, so hopefully that part is, is quicker.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move to.
My hand was raised.
I'm so sorry. Go ahead, please.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, I remember last time you guys said Berkeley had one of the highest responding rates in their survey in the area.
Yeah.
Seventy percent plus or something.
Yeah, no, you guys are off the chain. Yeah, you know, you guys were really off the chain when it came to the number of responses by far. I, I can remember looking at it. I think we may even given you an update about two weeks into it, and it was incredible. We, we had more in Berkeley, I think, the first few days than we had most in their entirety. So we, we know your community can do it and will do it, so I'll be real confident in that. So let's take a look at the qualities and so on. I'm going to stop sharing. And move to. So this is the part where we ask you the three prompts. And those three prompts have to do with what are the characteristics and qualities you want to see in the next superintendent? Followed by what are the strengths of the district where you brag, and then we'll finish that up with. What are some of the challenges that you see facing the district? Okay, so what are some of the qualities that, that you want to see in the next superintendent?
Our directors, if you can just follow a normal process to raise your hand, and we'll share out that way.
Eric, do you plan to capture?
I will capture.
So if I may, I'll just intervene for a moment. In terms of thinking about. The characteristics and traits that you desire in a superintendent. I generally try to say, we desire a superintendent who. And then finish that sentence is equity minded, is visible. Is someone who understands and has worked with special ed students and so on and so forth. Same thing with the strengths of the district, what are you most proud of? And then district challenges, what might be the challenges currently or on the horizon?
All right, I'm set, David. Let's go.
I think Director Alper wants to go ahead and start us off.
All right.
Okay, I'll start it off. I would say. Views their leadership through an equity lens. Is an excellent, oh, sorry, how much to start it? I, I want a superintendent who.
No, that's okay. We can capture it. I was just trying to find it a little bit. Thank you.
Is an excellent written and oral communicator. Is responsive and has previous experience as a superintendent.
And we can circle back certainly. Who's next?
In California, in California.
Got it.
Who would like to, to go next? Director Vasudev, would you like to go next?
I didn't hear my hand raised, but yeah, I can go next.
That's what happens when no one embraces their hand to vote from request to voluntad, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with a superintendent that's equity minded, that has an appreciation for community engagement, particularly for Berkeley. Because I think that's really important to our ethos as a district. And it likes, that has, you know, a track record of engaging, knowing how to authentically engage with a diverse group of stakeholders. A superintendent, like a superintendent. That has experience empowering their own staff, right? Like, I think internally, I'd like to see superintendents with strong leadership skills that know how to delegate and empower their direct reports and their staff. Let's see, a super, I would like to see a superintendent that understands the needs of our different affinity groups in BUSD. Particularly our most vulnerable ones. There are a lot of next learners, African American students and English language learners. Superintendent has a track record of implementing initiatives for those three populations and our students with disabilities as well. Has a proven track record of doing that. Let me see, and I'd like to see a superintendent who has experience working collaboratively. With labor partners, advocacy organizations, community-based organizations, all of the external stakeholders that also impact our work as a district.
And again, I just wanted to repeat, as we take turns providing the information, other things may come to mind. So we'll, we'll definitely circle back.
Great.
Thank you.
I'll go.
Director Sinai, would you like to go next?
Yes, I would love to go next. I would also add. Superhero, no. That I would like a superintendent who has a proven track record, appreciation and experience in using data. To inform their decision-making and. One that is driven by, you know. Monitoring and measuring outcomes and achievements that have been set out by the, the board. Whether through strategic plan, LCAP, or superintendent's evaluation. Strong management skills. I, I agree that part of that is the, what Director Vasudev said about empowering leaders. But also we have a very complex budget. We have a lot of tax measures and bond measures and a lot of accountability to our citizens. To make sure our residents, to make sure that we are using our money the way that our various measures have outlined that they need to be. So having a budget and budget management experience and the ability to work with the associate. Or Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. In an informed, you know, and, and intelligent way. I just, I'll stop there.
Director Babbitt?
Yes, in addition to what my colleagues have said, I really appreciate and agree with everything that they've said. I would like someone who has a clear understanding of race and racism and how to deal with that. In a school setting, in a community setting. And who won't shy away from those tough conversations, but can lead those courageous conversations and. Can really implement strategies. So that our, the need of our first level instructions are improved. And that the needs regarding racial isolation are completely addressed. And I don't want to repeat what my other colleagues have said, because I agree, but strategic planning through implementation. Someone who understands implementation and developing those milestones. Setting up an infrastructure. And being able to fully support that infrastructure and stand in that decision of the infrastructure choices that they made. To really get the community behind those infrastructure needs as well. And someone who won't shy away from accountability in the sense of implementing responsiveness. To the, to the urgent needs of our community. And being able to do that while working with our labor partners. While working with all of our various stakeholders is extremely important. Those would be the only additions or reinforcements I would also. Thank you.
I'll share mine. Of course, I am always aligned with my board directors. I want to see a superintendent who has a strong equity focus. I also want to see a leader who understands, like a, a data-driven leader. And who makes decisions based off of data, especially when we talk about our most vulnerable students. I wanted a leader who makes data-driven decisions. I want a leader who is. To the community and to our community partners. I would like to see an instructional leader or a leader who has a background of proven results around instruction. I think especially when we are in the year of learning loss, right? I would like to see a, an instructional leader who can come in and help us. Fix some of our instructional challenges, help us fix some of our achievement gap issues that have been plaguing our district for a very long time. I would also like to see a leader who has experience maneuvering through the pandemic and has proven results through community outreach. Who has proven, proven positive results within, you know, their districts or within the institutional places that they represent. I think that's important for us to remember, because although we are somewhat in the clear for now. We don't, we don't know when we'll be back on the, the rise again. So it'd be important to have a leader who, who understands that and can continue to help us maneuver through the, the pandemic like we've done so currently. Also would like a leader who is a visionary. I heard some of my board directors talk about strategic planning and the importance of having a leader who can take on that process. But I would also like to have a leader who, you know, is thought, of course thoughtful about strategic planning process. But takes a visionary approach to every situation we have in the district. I also would like to see a leader who is emotionally intelligent. That's, I think that's really important for us to have, and speaking to, you know, our cabinet. Members in, in the past, things that they've praised about what we have currently in our superintendent was around emotional intelligence. And so I would love to see a superintendent who offers emotional intelligence as well. So, so those are some of, some of my thoughts. I know Director Vasudev has her hand up, but I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge that both Jessica Lopez and Trish McDermott. Are staff members who are part of this committee, and they will have the opportunity. I'm really excited that they're, they're joining us, and so thank you for, for stepping up and supporting. And they will have the opportunity to go through this process with the rest of the staff. And this is just the board member briefing, and so if you see their names up there, I just want to acknowledge them and thank them. And thank them for their future feedback and what they'll share in the process. Director Vasudev?
Thank you, President Brown, for acknowledging our wonderful staff that's here too. And really just want to echo what President Brown said about instruction, an instructional leader. I thought those were great talking points, and I really second those. I also wanted to mention, and I don't want to lose track of something that my colleague Director Alper said at California, you know, someone with California experience or that's California-based. Just someone who really comes in with, I would like a superintendent that comes in with strong governance skills and appreciation for strong governance. That has gone through this, you know, the CSBA Masters in Governance Training. Or, you know, at least, you know, is really familiar with CSBA best practices. And so I don't know if that's something that other districts kind of, you know, require, requires as well. But for me, I think having someone who's, who has the experience, not only being acquainted with CSBA best practices, but also implementing these. And so, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see if we could find someone with that experience.
Director, Vice President Babbitt, and then Director Sinai?
Thank you. I just want to add, someone who has the right balance of delegation. And their administration skills, I think is extremely important. And then, secondly. While I appreciate and understand the instructional leadership role. I think we, personally, I would value someone who has higher administrative skills. And implementation skills and responsiveness skills. Because I think we can hire a lot of great minds that offer us the instructional leadership. And when I talk about that right balance of delegation and administration. We'll talk about this more in the next questions, but I think that's why I just want to highlight the strength of. Not necessarily focusing on like someone who went completely through the ed services land. Thank you.
If I could, if I could just clarify, Vice President Babbitt. To me, an instructional leader doesn't necessarily, like to your point, doesn't necessarily have to be someone that went through the, the ed services plans or went through the traditional trajectory or route. But I also added that, that they have proven results in instructional, from their instructional leadership. And so I think we, what we are saying may be hand in hand, so I just wanted to make that clarification. Director Sinai?
You're on mute.
I'm sure what you're saying is a really good director.
Boy, it was a kernel, and I just forgot what it was.
No, it's coming back to you, maybe.
No, I didn't forget. The, I, I don't know, maybe this piggybacks on Director Vasudev's comments around governance. But, you know, the superintendent is the one position we hire. But the role of the cabinet is strategically important in the implementation. So the superintendent has to be a bridge between the board and the cabinet and the executive staff. And the added component to that is we need a superintendent that has a proven track record. To be able to work and with the board cohesively as well as individually. The board is full of very diverse individuals that come together into a group. And so the ability to, to. to respect what all board members bring to the table and then also be able to move the body as a whole is a skill that's extremely important, I believe. And in relation to instructional leadership, I think this is a little bit of a, an interesting one that to unpack a little bit more because I, I do feel like a superintendent that has not had experience in the classroom at some pathway in their career lacks a certain amount of credibility and experience with the implementation of the, the guts of what schools do or the root of what schools do. So while I don't think it has to be, you know, a teacher to a principal, to a director, to a superintendent. Having some very clear track record around instruction and educational pedagogy, I do think is important and not one to just be wholeheartedly delegated. Delegated, yes, to the associate super of ed services in the sense of responsibility of implementation, but we historically have had a superintendent who does work directly with the high school. Works directly with our principals. And so I think, and our, and our unions. So having, and so I guess defining what that means is, is kind of important. What, you know, what instructional and educational experience means.
Did you want to begin that process or did you?
Well, I think I kind of said what, what my perceptions were. So I don't know what, what other folks.
Well, I will just say that unfortunately, what I've observed is people leave the classroom and what we hope they take with us from that experience, we don't see. I have lots of teachers and counselors and administrators in my families. And often the, the conversation is, it's like they've never been in the classroom from our administrative leaders. It's like, I don't know what happens, but they totally forget what it's actually like. And parents and teachers are usually so much more allies because we are closer to the classroom always. And then we end up working together to advocate through the administrative lens. And then the administrative lens, when they haven't really been deeply trained in really managing similar, if you would think of your superintendent as a CEO or your associates as like your chief operating officers, they really haven't had those kinds of, not all, not saying all, but that's where sometimes we fall short in meeting our implementation plans because that level of deep dive administration and forecasting and and really creating infrastructure and efficiencies and dealing with some of the tough conversations need to be built in my view.
Thank you guys so much. You guys ready to brag a little bit?
We're always ready to brag, but do you think, do you feel like you got enough information from us in terms of our, our wants around instructional leadership?
Yes, I do. I do. I think I get it.
Okay.
What are your strengths?
Ready to brag? Who would like to? What are we proud of?
I would like to brag. Berkeley and I love Berkeley Unified. And we have a lot of, a lot of richness within our community. Our parent community who so willingly volunteers their time, their expertise, their, their willingness to serve. During the pandemic, we've had over 800 volunteers who were able to help with, with our testing. You know, they're always coming out to meetings to give their perspectives, to share brilliant minds all over. And so I think that is definitely unique and, and a strong suit that a superintendent should look forward to embracing as they're going Berkeley Unified.
Nice.
I'll stop there because there's more, there's more, you know, we're the first here, we're the first there. We've done so much. We recognize nationwide here and there.
Okay, who would like to go next? Director Saino?
I echo what Vice President Babbitt said. We rock, we're good. Right, right, right. You know, I think our, our teachers and staff are really phenomenal. And I think they show shine, show shine. During COVID, I think we, you know, again, remote learning, not ideal, you know, but our teachers completely stepped up and created programming and curriculum for engaging our students. And I think, you know, their, their commitment to come back and, you know, go through all of the challenges that were needed. Just showed a resilience and continues to show a resilience from both our teachers and staff and their commitment to, to serve our students. I think, you know, they went above and beyond in a lot of ways to try to reach out to students who weren't engaged. And so I just, you know, I appreciate them. And I think when I think about not, not to dismiss our neighbors, but you know, I just think that we've been able to build partnerships with our labor partners to work things through together. And again, not everybody was always happy about everything or many things. But you know, we, we were able to build partnerships and make things and make things work. So I really, I applaud them. And I think any superintendent coming in would be fortunate to have labor partners like the ones that we have.
Thank you.
And I think our parent organizations and our affinity groups, I mean, again, kind of, it, it's the, it's the Berkeley School Volunteers is a gem. But also just the, the willingness of so many of our family members and community members to step up and bring their expertise and their time and their passion, you know, to our, you know, students and our families is unique.
And their finances.
I was about to say that in my comment.
Let me raise my hand. Let me raise my.
Director Vasudev?
Yeah, I, I echo what my colleague said. And you know, I always go back to our mission statement and, you know, at our recent CSBA training, we all went around and shared our different mission statements and ours is top notch. We enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And so, you know, we're thinking of how are we prepping our kids for the next big step, right? Like for making contributions at a, at a large level, right? Small town, but like, you know, big goals. So I really love our mission statement. And I think, you know, my board colleagues are really, really practice our mission when we show up. And so very honored to, to work with this team. Say that everything that my colleagues have said, our volunteers are top notch. Equity is always at the center of our work, you know, from, you know, our external parent volunteers are always thinking, you know, how are we, yes, to the fundraising issue, how are we fundraising, but who are we fundraising for? And how is this helping the most vulnerable, you know, part of our student population? I think we're a really collaborative community, right? Like we don't like to make decisions in silos. We really try to, to work closely with our community-based organizations in Berkeley. So I think that's very unique to our ethos as a district. So I think that level of collaboration is really important. Collaboration, community building and equity at the center of all decision-making in the district, you know, from the top to, you know, to the bottom, to how we work with our after-school program. To, you know, everything that we do, how our PTAs function and what our teachers are teaching in the classroom. That equity is really at the center of our decision-making. So, and we have a lot of smart, passionate people in our community. There's never a shortage of opinions in Berkeley. And so I love that, that, you know, engagement is not optional for us. It's something that's going to happen no matter how big the decision or how small the decision.
Director Alper?
Has anybody mentioned the, the parcel taxes and bonds that our community? No?
That's what I was gonna mention. That's what I told Vice President Babbitt.
Okay, you, you know, you go ahead. I agree. I would agree that everyone else has said I was going to add that, but go ahead.
I was gonna add that, you know, anyone coming into this district will be really lucky that we have a city that supports us tremendously. That our lower class sizes, our students' access to arts and access to enrichment is supported by our city, right? So Director Alper mentioned parcel taxes, our parcel taxes to support our, our teachers, our maintenance. These that we are really lucky to have a city that financially supports our school district. As well as I want to take the opportunity to, to talk about Berkeley Public Schools Fund and the way that they support our, our school district. I think that's one thing that is a pretty unique to our district in the way that Berkeley Public Schools Fund really, really steps up some supports. Since I'm going Director Alper, I'll just finish, but we, we do have strong engagement and collaboration like Director Vasudev brought up, but we also have one, one thing that I think is really incredible is our students. We have phenomenal young people in our school district. It's simplified through, you know, our student board director who participates as well as our student advocates who, who come to our board meetings. We have the best of the best, the creme de la creme, I think, when it comes to students. And any superintendent who comes into this district will be able to, to see that as well as the parents or families who they come to, to, to school to represent. We also have very strong community partners. And that's, that's really important. And one thing that I think also that sets our district apart from others is our, when talking about our community partners, but our opportunities to, as students through our, our CTE programs and our pathway programs. That is an opportunity that's not available or offered in every school district. It's something that's really important and it's something that helps us to focus on our, our equity goals and our, our vision to get students, you know, to and through college, but also access to, to careers.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Director Alper, did you want to add anything to that?
What do you guys see as your challenges? And it doesn't mean we can't go back and forth.
I'm sorry, I would like to say one more strength is in our board because I think we do a great job trying to be supportive of the superintendent and to really lead with the right balance that we want them to lead with. We really model empowerment. We tried to model responsiveness. We tried to model collaboration. We tried to model respect and we try to model all of these things. And so I think that I wouldn't sell ourselves short because that takes work, right? That takes us being, doing the work also. We're in, we will be in it with that person. Then I can move on to the, our challenges, you said?
Yep.
So I've been in BUSD as a parent advocate for equity for over 10 years. And I think our greatest challenge is, which is why I kind of say I, we need someone with that administrative kind of knows how to delegate, knows how to implement a plan. Berkeley is amazing at coming up with plans. Implementing them has been, and following through, you know, I hear my colleagues say data-driven decisions. We're good about collecting the data, but we're not good about using it to actually move the needle. And we all want to see the needle moved. That for me, it's, that is going to be a great challenge. How do you actually move the needle? Because all of the things that we've said we do as a community to support BUSD schools is because that needle moved. We do want all of our students to have opportunities to change the world, to influence the world, just like our mission statement says. And so that is a significant challenge that we've had over the last decade. And then I would say it starts with our, the ways in which we have bureaucracy, which may be unneeded at this point. We still have some practices from 10, 15 years ago, even though we're in 2022. So being able to shift and pivot, not only in response to COVID, but just in response to where we are in this era of technology. Why are we still doing things just because we always did it? Specifically administratively. And then I think another challenge is while we're great in having community engagement, we're not great in actually taking that feedback and making sure five years later, we're not going to get that same feedback from a different parent community. And so I think that's what we also need to do when we talk about moving the needle. Because like I said, over 10 years. And if we were to start an after-school task force right now, the, the results would look very similar to the one five years ago.
Good.
And so actually implementing change, I think, while we do great things along the way, we, we really need to be able to shift and pivot into some results that make us all just as proud. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other thoughts?
Director Vasudev, would you like to go next or Director Alper?
Love calling on me, President Brown. No, I think I, on the technology, I agree with what Vice President Babbitt said. Sometimes on the technology front, I feel like we we're really good at starting seed projects, but can be better at making sure that we're maintaining them. So like an example would be STEM, you know, we talked about STEM as an asset, definitely an asset at the middle school level, but our kids are coding on Chromebooks. And so, you know, kind of keeping up with the times, making sure that we're modernizing as we're, you know, co-creating new, new programs is really important. I would say on hiring practices, making sure that, you know, we're always improving our HR practices so that we can continue to retain and attract top talent to our wonderful district would be a growth area. And I think in terms of collaboration and engagement, making sure that we're co-creating with community, I think is really important. Where community engagement is now particularly with affinity groups, right? Making sure that we're co-creating and getting alignment on metrics versus just kind of checking the box, right? Like there's all check-in-the-box kind of community engagement where you kind of go around and talk to everybody, but you're not necessarily co-creating. So how are you co-creating and driving things forward together, right? Building consensus and establishing transparency around metrics, which I think goes back to the real need for strategic planning in the district, right? It was discussed last night at the board meeting. And so I think that that's kind of the next step level. It's like, okay, let's get some alignment with, we know that there's an active community. Let's get some alignment on metrics, right? Everybody on the same page. And let's move forward together versus just kind of check in the box. We're really good at just checking the box sometimes. But yeah. Overall, I, we're still in an amazing district.
Yes, you are.
Director Saino?
I think recruitment and retention of our educating staff. I think also potentially, you know, our administrators as retirements or just transitions. I think there's a lot of, I mean, I don't think this is unique to Berkeley. So it's probably a challenge that every district has right now. It's just rebuilding kind of the, the mental resilience of all of the adults in our district that are stressed and burned out. And so kind of the care and nurturing, you know, of our, our employee community at all levels is something that I think we have to pay heightened attention to throughout the, throughout the district. I think the other, you know, you know, kind of similar to what Vice President Babbitt said is, you know, we have a deeply ingrained achievement gap that has existed and persisted for decades. I would love to see a superintendent who actually has made a difference in his or her district around, you know, the targeted strategies with our students. And the question is how that relates, again, kind of to the challenge we have in setting priorities. We have a lot that we We have a lot that we want to do and we have a lot that we expect our administrators to do. But we, we lack, I think, kind of really targeted focus with accountability to move things to, to see again, kind of the, the change happen. And I think the last thing I'll say is, and I think this is again, not unique to Berkeley, but just change management. And building off of some of the innovation that happened in COVID, what I find that we're doing, again, that a lot of us across the, you know, country are doing is we pivoted quickly, we were innovative, we did stuff and we were like, you know, we found that there were some things working. Particularly like there were things working with some of our kids of color that felt safer in a home environment or that did different things in different ways. And there was kind of this thing of like, let's not forget what's working now and see what we can continue. But our institutions tend to fall back onto what we did before. And I don't think we're capturing the moment to say, what, what innovation or what transformation happened during COVID that we potentially want to build up? So kind of the, the institutional rut that we all kind of collectively fall back into. I feel like we're on that path. We're, we're kind of falling back into business as usual. When we have an opportunity to maybe capture some, some different ways of doing things.
Director Alper?
The only thing I would add, it's not really an area for growth. I mean, I agree with everyone said, but a challenge will be that we need to renew our, the parcel tax that pays for a third of our teaching staff and, and a number of our other critical programs, including our visual and performing arts. And that will be up for renewal in, in 2024. So very soon, soon after the new superintendent starts and the planning for that will have to start this year, I think. So that, that will be a challenge, especially, and, and it would be great therefore to have a superintendent who has experience leading that kind of effort.
Thank you. Anything else or anyone else who's not going?
I, I just would agree with all of my board colleagues, especially around improvements and upgrades. And that's, that goes for of course, systems, facilities, practices, policies and priorities. All of those things are, are challenges that we face. I do want to speak to the achievement gap, our piece of data that tells us about how our school is performing. Of course, as you all know, it's a California dashboard. That data hasn't been updated since, you know, 2019, but when we look at that data, we'll see growth areas of growth for some subgroups of students, but not for all of them. And so I think that is something that continues to be a challenge. We're nationally known for our achievement gap. And we have not yet, like when I, when I was in school, my teacher preparation program, I learned about Berkeley's achievement gap. And my fear is that we, our biggest challenge is we have not yet moved the needle for all of our students, but specifically our most vulnerable students. And our data identifies that as our Black and African American students. And so that's a, a, a challenge that has been raised more times than, than it hasn't. However, we are still in, in the same place and and, and that is a challenge that continues to persist. Director Simon?
Similar on the note of Director Alper, where it's, it's just a kind of a statement of fact as a challenge of the ballot measure is our union contracts are all up for negotiation. So whether we conclude, you know, BFT by the time the current superintendent leaves, we still have three more. So either way, we've got three to four union contracts that we're needing to negotiate upon a new superintendent's arrival.
Perfect.
Director, Vice President Babbitt, and then I have another thing to add.
Sure.
Okay. The last thing I'd like to add around our challenges, which is why I asked for a superintendent that understands race and racism is the reason I became an, an advocate for equity or a parent advocate for equity within our district is because I was at a PTA meeting. And this was about 10 years ago. And the principal, who was a white principal, literally explained to us that the only rationale they could find for the reasons why we had such a discrepancy in our data related to race and racism. Because, and the reason they drew that conclusion was no matter what the socioeconomic background was of some of our Black and Brown students, they were still treated unfairly. They were still three times more likely to be suspended. They were still just as behind. Their parents were doing many of the things that other parents who don't face those kinds of headwinds do. And yet they were still finding that these students were being impacted differently than their non-white students. So that is a real challenge and we need someone who understands that if they really want to be able to help us move the needle. We've been working on an African American success framework. And people talked about all these other things. And then this one person came back and said, you haven't mentioned race and racism. And you have to do that in this era if you want to change the needle. That is also a challenge.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Director Vasudevan?
I just say that on the issue of equity, potentially a growth area for the district is trying to come up with some kind of comprehensive approach. I see a lot of districts moving towards building equity offices and having, you know, using their data to really inform what they're doing for all their different affinity groups. And so making sure that we're looking at all of the diverse communities within the district, updating our data, you know, making sure that we're transparent with our data, dashboarding publicly to the community. And looking at, you know, how other districts have really built out robust and transparent equity focused, you know, targeted interventions. Adding that to our work as a district will be really.
Good. Good job, you guys. Woo. You did it. I really want to thank you guys so much for meeting with us tonight. I think we have a lot of information to digest. David and I will be reaching out to the subcommittee members to come up with some dates for us to really do a deeper dive into where we need to go from here. And in turn, they will be getting information out to you guys. So with that, we want to thank you so much. I know you have some business you need to take care of in terms of either more agenda items or closing out the meeting.
A few more, a few more.
Yeah, but with that, David and I will kind of say enough. David, do you want to say something?
Yes, I do believe that the, the job position will be posted on the Leadership Associates website tomorrow morning. As early as tomorrow morning. So that'll get blasted out as well. And then of course, as we work with the ad hoc group, myself and Eric, we'll start to work with Jessica with respect to the website, the Berkeley website.
So, so with that, thank you guys and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you all so.
I have a quick question. You go. I want to make sure that, you know, like who to add on the thread for the ad hoc group because, you know, sometimes we unintentionally leave out staff. So I want to make sure that it's me, Director Babbitt, Jessica Lopez Teo and Trish McDermott, that those four names are always added.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that, Director Vasudevan. Eric and David, thank you for your time with us here at this evening. I feel really happy about this process and feel really confident about you all leading us through this process. So thank you for the leadership that you are providing on behalf of Leadership Associates. And thank you for the, the additional care that is going into this process. We know it'll make all the difference for us. So thank you all so much.
Thank you for your kind words. Wow, that's touching. Wow.
Thank you so much. It's really an honor, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. At next community and board, we will move to our second opportunity for public comment. At this time, please raise your hand if you are interested in speaking during the public comment period. We have two hands raised, which we will give them three minutes each. Director Babbitt. Can you please, Jessica, can you please promote Emerson Bears Club PTA, followed by Rona Cho?
Oops. Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Sorry, this is Cielo Reos. I'm the VP of Equity at Emerson. I clearly log, I'm logged in now because we actually have an equity session with Ms. Pam tonight. So this is why I'm, I have this, this thing up. I just wanted to say really quick, I, I joined this a little late, but I really appreciate getting to hear the background from each of you in terms of what you see as opportunities and challenges for the district. I, I'm blown away. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I was so happy to hear this as a topic, is the predictable racial outcome for our students. We have started to explore that at Emerson and the Emerson, in the equity group with Ms. Pam and looking at the CASP scores. And as a, as a Chicana, as a person who's grown up in different educational environments, I really want the board, I want the new superintendent to really look at these scores and look at early interventions. At Emerson, we have RTI and EL resources, but it's not enough. And my concern is that my daughter's classmates are going to drop out of Berkeley High. Like their, their, their trajectory is not right. And it infuriates me on so many levels, which is why I'm in the equity role, trying to lift this up. So thank you for the comments. I, like I said, I'm so heartened by this. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being here this afternoon or this evening. Ms. Lopez, can you please promote Ms. Cho?
Will do. Hello again. This is Rona Cho. And thank you to the directors who included addressing transparency and community engagement in this process, including addressing measure Bonji. I'd like to address other BUSD challenges in line with the prompts. Thank you, President Brown, for pointing out after school programs. That is another area that I'm deeply exploring. And you may or may not know, the 2018 Task Force on After School Care came up with a number of 20 some recommendations and none have been acted upon since 2018. So we have been talking with Erin Morgensen through the Berkeley PTA Council. We had a meeting with Brazil Mathentire at that point as well. And I will say that I don't see progress happening. So we would like to have more attention given to Bears and Learns, hiring bottlenecks and possibly a district sided enrichment program. You should know that we heard at our kindergarten open house, families are deciding enrollment depending on availability, availability of after school care. They are leaving the district because there's no or inadequate after school care in our district, especially at the elementary school level. It's so chronically problematic. This is, it's not an afterthought. So we need to think of after school care as part of the school day. And I'd also like to address Director Alper's comment on art and PE funding. Our PTA, our, the bulk of our funding is for our NPE and Prop 14 or budget shortfall, shortfalls or whatnot. I hope this is addressed because the burden is so heavy for us to carry what are really important subject areas. And some of these areas are the only ones that some students thrive through during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for, for being here this afternoon or this evening. At this time, is there a second public or second board member comment? Many of the board members? No? Well, we've reached the time for adjournment. And so the meeting is adjourned at 5:51 PM. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you, President Brown.